Meeting to order. Okay, let's leave, start with a roll call.
Council President Corman.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McErvin.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you. Tonight we have a couple of proclamations, and the first one is Mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas the city of Renton recognizes adequate nutrition as a basic goal for each citizen, and whereas no child should go to school hungry, no baby should be without feedings needed for mental and physical growth, no elderly person's health should be jeopardized by lack of appropriate foods, and whereas food bank, emergency, and hot meal programs working with the city of Renton, local faith communities, social service agencies, and hundreds of volunteers strive day in and day out to stem the rising tide of hunger but still need more help, and whereas when winter approaches and low-income families must stretch their dollars to cover increasing fuel, electricity, and rental costs, leaving even less money for monthly food purchase, an outpouring of community assistance is needed, and whereas the emergency feeding program coordinates an annual food drive which will be held at 851 Howzer Way North on Saturday, September 18, 2021, to help support the efforts of their program and the area's food banks in fighting hunger, and whereas the city of Renton has been a steadfast supporter of this vital project and has strived to eradicate hunger in the community, now therefore I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim September 18, 2021, to be Mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry in the city of Renton, and I strongly urge all citizens to join the emergency feeding program and the Salvation Army Renton Rotary Food Bank in their efforts to nourish those who are hungry and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 13th day of September 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move that council concur in the proclamation.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Corman and seconded by Councilmember McErvin that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries, and tonight we have Belinda Dunbar joining us to accept the proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, I do not see Belinda on our attendee list.
Okay, thank you very much. We will make sure that Belinda gets that. Next up, we have National Recovery Month.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders work, disorders works, treatment is effective, and recovery is possible, and whereas recovery is a process and people recover in our local area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally, and whereas an estimated 400,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas we recognize four dimensions of recovery from mental health and substance use disorders: health, home, purpose, and community, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, HHS, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, King County, and the city of Renton invite all residents to support King County's Recovery Month theme, "Recovery is for Everyone", every person, every family, every community. Now therefore I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim September 2021 to be National Recovery Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all members of the community to join me in this special observation. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 13th day of September 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move that council concur in the proclamation.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McErvin that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries, and tonight to accept the proclamation is Kathleen Murphy, Behavioral Health Recovery Specialist at King County Department of Community and Human Services, Behavioral Health and Recovery Division. That's a big title. Hello, Kathleen.
Thank you so much for having me today. Again, I'm Kathleen Murphy, and my role with the county is the Behavioral Health Recovery Specialist. I'm uniquely situated for that position in that I am someone in recovery from both mental health and substance use issues. Your recognition of Recovery Month is really important as we join together to reduce stigma and discrimination against those impacted by mental health and substance use conditions. Recovery in all its forms is possible and even likely with the right supports in place. Recovery Month gives us an opportunity to celebrate the successes of our neighbors in recovery and the families and service providers supporting them on their journey. On behalf of my peers recovering from behavioral health conditions, King County's Behavioral Health and Recovery Division, and the citizens of Renton, I thank you, Mayor Pavoni, and honorable council members, for your leadership and for proclaiming September 2021 as National Recovery Month.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome back. Good to see everyone. All right, the Solid Waste Utility Division is hosting the last of three mini-recycle events on Saturday, September 18, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Renton Technical College. This event will include document shredding and collection of styrofoam. Food donations for the Renton Salvation Army Food Bank will also be accepted during this event. For more information, please go to rentonlaw.gov/solidwasteutility/recycleevent. The King County Library System will display a pop-up story walk along the walking path at Liberty Park through September. Enjoy each page of Cat's Colors as you walk around the park. Gumview Renton History Museum's new temporary exhibit, "When You Can't Go Home: Portraits of Refugees in the Pacific Northwest." This exhibit is the life work of Teresa Kisi, local artist, author, and advocate. Kisi spent hours with each refugee featured in this exhibit with the help of World Relief, a globally celebrated refugee resettlement organization. These moving watercolor portraits demonstrate a passion for enabling some of the most marginalized people in the world to be seen and heard. This is on exhibit through November 6. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. And that is the report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll open up the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of you have been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the timer is close to expiring. And I know we have some people signed up today.
Mr. Mayor, we have seven people signed up in advance to speak tonight.
Okay.
The first person we have is Tim Heiner. Tim, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
All right, thanks for having us. I represent Cascade Civil Construction. I live in Bonnie Lake, Pierce County, and we wanted to speak to the council today as we are the contractor doing the Williams Wells Conversion Project between Second and Third Downtown, Old Downtown Corridor. We've had approximately a year and four months of work on the project. There's been significant changes and revisions to the project, added time, added contract value, and added scope, and with that comes a need for extra costs, extra performance by the contractor, and what we wanted to do is just express that there's been a, I guess without any other way to say it, it's just been a slow process getting the change orders executed, and we'll speak to, our second speaker, Carl, behind me, will speak to that in more detail. But in short, we want to make sure the council understands the magnitude of what we're dealing with here. It's been a challenge with, mostly with underground utility conflicts. As you all know, this is a very old city. Many parts of it are more than 100 years old. Many of the utilities are more than 80 years old, some of them still in service, and encountering those can be very challenging, particularly when people don't really have much record of utilities from 80 years ago. And so I think the engineering team of Partit has been helpful in helping us navigate through all that, and we're simply trying to help work with them to get the extra costs and things resolved into change orders that are payable. And while I see on the agenda this evening that there is an item for our project, I think Change Order 12 is going to be presented to you by others, there are many other changes that are still pending that we are working with the engineering group to, and the transportation group to bring to resolution. We're not in dispute, we just simply want to make sure that the council understands the magnitude and what it is we're dealing with here as we're trying to get toward the end. We feel like we're in the home stretch of trying to get things completed here this month, and we will soon have things completed, so I will turn over the details to Carl, who's going to follow up, I believe, just right after I do here, so I think I'm probably about done here.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have is Carl Nelson. Carl, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Carl Nelson. I live in Beaverton, Oregon, and I'm the Vice President of Operations for, speaking on behalf of Cascade Civil. The project, as Tim was saying, has been challenged with many things that is really is inherent in taking on a downtown upgrade with all the old utilities that are there. We are, as we get to the end of the project, we are challenged with a number of field directives that need to be put into change orders, and our concern is, and the reason for us coming tonight is not because Partit or the folks in the city that we're working with haven't been great to work with, it's just the amount of time, and we're on a path right now, if we project out based on how quickly we're going through the numbers, we're going to be doing this in six or eight months, and that's just way, that's of concern to us. In our contract, and I think it's the city's, it's in their contract, is that a lot of this work is done on force account, and there's language in there that force account should be reconciled and paid within 30 days, but our experience is finding that we've got several changers that are force account work that are now out over 180 days. We've got collectively between those that are out over 30 days, we've got over 20, about 30, what they call PCOs, potential change orders, that are out there, they're out there quite a way, quite a bit, and in the past, we had discussions and had talked, the city's representatives had talked about seeing if they could process about three a day. We've never been able to do that with the exception of one day. We're lucky if we get three inside of a week, two weeks, and so we're appealing for whatever help can be put on this so that we can finish up the paperwork and get all this resolved in a timely manner and not string it out. Partit's been good to work with, the city folks that we're working with have been good to work with, and we appreciate them working. We're not assured exactly what needs to be done to supplement them so that we can get through this pile, just as Tim had indicated, I think, there was over 104 field directives to date on the project, which is a really excessive number for a contract that was the size of our contract when we started, at $7.7 million. So again, we're just appealing to you, wanted to bring to your attention the order of magnitude that we're dealing with and the sense of urgency to get these resolved so that we can get paid for this work, some of which is over 180 days old. With that, I don't have any more comments unless there's any questions I could answer.
No, we actually don't do that during audience comments, but we will definitely be talking to staff and getting back to you on this issue. I talked to the administrator earlier today, knowing that you guys are going to be coming and speaking to us, so we'll be back in touch. Somebody will be in touch with you guys later than tomorrow. Appreciate that. You bet.
The next person we have is Paulette Makela. Paulette, go ahead.
My name is Paulette Makela of Renton, Washington. My last name is spelled M-A-K-E-L-A. I am here to call the attention of the derelict buildings in Renton downtown area that are repeatedly accessed by homeless individuals even after being boarded up, creating an environment that is dangerous to the citizenry and bad for local businesses. For example, the inactive Church of Latter-day Saints located at 220 South Third Place, Renton 98057, which is directly across from St. Anthony Elementary School. There are syringe needles and trash littering the ground, also a burned garbage bin, on premises, and graffiti on the walls. Even going back since the last year of February 2020 to the present, there have been police reports about the facility being accessed numerous times by individuals to sleep, defecate, and do drugs. Over the last 90 days, there are more than a dozen CAD, computer-aided dispatch records, and calls for this location. The businesses next to it have made police reports and calls regarding disturbances coming from that address. The owner has done little else to prevent entry besides boarding up windows and doors. While this could be considered a reasonable measure in event of one or two occurrences, the sustained frequency at which this happened then could be considered a nuisance. I would like to ask, what are the procedures that the city of Renton can pursue when such derelict buildings become nuisance and a danger to local businesses and patrons alike? Can such buildings be petitioned to be used for a teen community, sorry, a teen community center or such things? That's all.
Okay, thank you. So to answer a few of your questions, I did inquire about this property, and there has been a number of complaints, and they have actually received code violations a couple of times, and we are now in the possession of the owner's actual address. They live out of state. The building is for sale, and they did recently sign an agreement allowing us to trespass the folks that are causing so much havoc there, so you know, it is a long process to take care of these issues, but it's definitely something we're going through the process. Thank you for coming forward tonight. Who is next?
The next question we have is Ren Hinderer. Ren, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Ren, Renton Hinderer, and I am here, I'm from Columbus, and I'm here to address the Renton City Council because I would like to propose a bill that if you have the same name as the city, you get to be the mayor of the city. I think this would be a good law because my name's Renton, and I think I would be a fun mayor of Renton because I'm a cool guy and I have the same name, and so yeah, I have some signatures here, about four of them, so maybe if we could, you know, make that a law, or even easier, Mr. Mayor, if you could name me mayor right here, that would be really great. That's all.
Well, there are definitely days where I would love to name you mayor, so thank you very much for that.
The next person we have is Ashley Dale from Bailing Out Benji. Ashley, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for the, allowing me to, hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Ashley Dale, and I'm the Director of Operations with Bailing Out Benji, a nonprofit that researches the puppy mill industry and more specifically their connection to pet stores. I have been working very closely with your Renton residents since Puppyland first opened, and I can tell you this is not a business model that they support. Over 50 Renton residents submitted comments to the Planning Commission in support of a humane pet store ordinance. Not one Renton resident sent in a comment in opposition. The 12 comments that were submitted in opposition were not from Renton residents, and they were from individuals who work in the pet industry. The entire council has also received numerous emails in support of a humane pet store ordinance. The conditions in the store are not the issue, and while the regulations the Planning Department has suggested are well-intended, they do not get to the root of the problem. The problem is that Puppyland is importing and selling puppy mill puppies and locking families into high-interest loans for puppies that already cost thousands of dollars. One of your very own Renton residents was sold a $6,200 puppy and locked into a pet loan that had an APR of 98.98%. This Renton resident was going to pay over $10,000 for a puppy. We have a paper trail that proves Puppyland is importing and selling hundreds of puppy mill puppies to unsuspecting customers. Every single puppy imported comes from a very large USDA broker in Iowa called Jack's Puppies, Inc. Brokers are middlemen between commercial breeders, more commonly known as puppy mills, and pet stores. At their last inspection, Jack's had 254 puppies at their warehouse waiting to be transported across the country to pet stores in over 24 states. Customers who have reached out to our organization for help have allowed us to connect these puppies to large mills in six different Midwest states, more commonly known as the puppy mill belt. One of those facilities has over 1,200 dogs on site and a history of federal violations. Another one of Puppyland suppliers was directly involved in the national puppy laundry scheme, which Jack started. Renton's proposed regulations address the care of puppies now at the store and require additional reporting, but they do not address the suffering that goes on in puppy mills. We need the city to think about the parent dogs that are left behind and how that cute puppy in the window got there. We need the city to think about the Renton residents who are being sold sick puppies and the families that are locked into high-interest loans. There is no humane or ethical way to sell puppies in a pet store, which is why we're asking you to join the other eight jurisdictions in Washington that have already stopped the sale of puppies in existing pet stores. Passing an ordinance that applies to those existing stores is your legal right as a city. The city of Olympia and Kitsap County had existing puppy selling stores and both passed ordinances to cut off the puppy mill pipeline. This is not about shutting down businesses as humane ordinances allow for pet stores to remain open and sell supplies and offer pet-related services. This is about protecting your residents and taking a stand against cruelty. Thank you for your time.
The next person we have is Jill Servais. Jill, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jill Servais, and I live in North Renton. Thank you all for your dedication to the city of Renton and to its residents. I have spoken to the Planning Commission several times, and I have written emails to all of you, and I've spoken to some of you in person. This is about the Puppyland store. This is not a small business. The owners of Puppyland Renton also own Puppyland Piallop as well as a store in Idaho and one in Texas. In 2020 alone, the Puppyland and Piallop imported over 1,200 puppies. In the few months that Renton Puppyland has been open, they have imported more than 700. On the Puppyland website tonight, which you could all go to, 116 puppies are listed. If you have $5,000 to $8,000 laying around, you can be the proud owner of a schnoodle or a spring-a-doodle or a shizapoo or a yushan or any of the other varieties that they're selling. If you don't have the funds, you have nothing to worry about because they have some really interesting lending options available to you for up to 200% interest. At an average cost of $5,000 per dog, that means over half a million dollars in inventory exists just between the Renton and the Piallop store. We all know the concept of "not in my backyard." If any of us lived right next door to a puppy mill, we would be outraged and fighting day and night to free those poor dogs. But because the puppies we see in this Renton store have all been spit-polished and cleaned up, it's easy to forget the horrible conditions they were born into and the parents left behind. We have all the paperwork proving that Puppyland buys from many different mills, the larges of which have over $1,000. One of the suppliers even has the dubious distinction of being one of the Horrible Hundred, which is the list of the worst puppy mills in the nation. I have been one of the Renton residents who has protested outside of this store on many occasions. This past Saturday, a prospective customer went in the store, then came out and came over to talk to us to get more information about why we were standing there holding signs. He told me that the puppy concierge he worked with told him that the dogs come from local breeders. He was so surprised and grateful to learn about where the puppies actually come from and thanked us for being there. He left the parking lot with the intention to seek out a responsible, ethical local breeder or search for a rescue dog that will become a new member of his family. Of course, this is a great experience as a volunteer, and it happens almost every time I've been outside that store, but we can't be there every day, all day. We just can't. But the city of Renton can, and it can do its part to ensure that we are not condoning or contributing to the puppy mill industry. I thank you very much for your time tonight. Employee, just please spend some time looking at all the documentation you'll be receiving via email so that you can answer all of your questions. Let's tell Puppyland, "Not in our backyard." Thank you again.
The next person we have is Kathleen Powell. Kathleen, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm Kathleen Powell. I'm a Renton resident and a 14-plus-year volunteer with South County Cats in Renton, which service, services South King County, and I'm also the rescue chair for the Pacific Crascazon Club, longtime companion pet advocate. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about Puppyland, as I know you'll soon be hearing from your planning department on this topic. I know they claim their puppies are not sourced from puppy mills, but the paperwork trail indicates otherwise. Residents began writing to the city council in January to discourage this type of business in Renton. I count 167 responses to date regarding the approval of a humane pet sales ordinance. All are in support of this, with the exception of people who own Puppyland, are employees, or are their paid lobbyists. I know they claim their puppies are not sourced from puppy mills, but the paperwork trail indicates otherwise. We have to remember that for every cute puppy they sell, and so far this year it's over 700 in Renton, there's a mom and a dad dog left behind. And here's what I know personally. My dog Louis was rescued from a puppy mill as a young adult. He was not socialized to be a pet and was basically a feral dog. As much as people love dogs, not too many people will take on a dog like this. Our group received 150 dogs from this mill in a three-year period of time, all dogs going into experienced foster, adoptive homes to give them the best chance possible of a somewhat normal life. The puppies that aren't sold in their prime are left to languish at the mill and reproduce as many litters as possible. So unless an adult dog is rescued by a breed club or humane society, they are left to live there in neglect until they die or euthanized. Oftentimes, the euthanasia is not humane, and although I have details on that, I won't go into it tonight. I know they claim their puppies are not sourced from puppy mills, but many people on this call know otherwise, and the paperwork trail indicates otherwise. And now you know too. We can't pretend we don't know. Council, please vote for a humane pet sales ordinance so that Renton is not that community on the east side that allows this kind of business to perpetuate inhumane dog breeding practices. I thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
That was the last person that we have signed up in advance. There's- If there's anyone else in the audience that would like to address council, please use your computer to raise your hand. It looks like we have a few hands raised. The next person is Trinise Williams. Trinise, go ahead.
How y'all doing? Honorable Mayor Pavoni and the City Council. This is Tree Williams from the Black Lives Matter Street Mural Project. And I want to tune in tonight and just give everyone a big thank you for all the progress and the success we saw on Reveal Day. It was definitely a day to remember and I'm super proud of all the work we've done together. I wanted to use this time as an opportunity to push the needle a little bit more on why we say Black Lives Matter and why we decided to make an ordinance about it. Like I said, I was super proud of the progress and I got to pretty much talk to almost everyone who's on this call and that really made me happy, just to see the community come forth and be face-to-face. That really made it worth it. But I did want to bring attention to the fact that the city of Renton needs to look into starting an Equity and Inclusion Task Force just to make sure that when an event like the Black Lives Matter Street Mural happens, the people who have been working really, really hard since the very beginning a year ago, make sure they get recognized. And when I say "they," I mean like myself. I know the city of Renton, you all are proud of the project, but moving forward, I would hope that we could include the people who've been working on the project when we talk about the Street Mural Project and what it means to the city of Renton. And again, let me say I'm so grateful that it was able to happen, but I would love for us to collaborate more and be more inclusive, especially when it comes to the lead creative, myself, of the project, just to be sure that we include my voice when we talk about what it means to the city of Renton. And yeah, I just wanted to make sure I came on and mentioned that inclusion is very important and that the street mural isn't just like an art project. It's just the beginning. So a task force that keeps a black person in the room or somebody who's ethnic just to make sure that we're doing that check down when we're making decisions as a city, you know, making sure that the room, the people making decisions are making equitable decisions. So again, thank you all for y'all's time. Thank you for letting the Street Mural happen and creating the ordinance and all that. And I'm super excited to continue to move forward. And again, this is Tree Williams with the Street Mural and that's all I got.
Mr. Mayor?
Hi, yes.
Thank you very much. I will take this opportunity to thank Ms. Williams for her leadership, advocacy, and talent. I had the opportunity to meet her during the paint of the mural and she, as an artist, is amazing, what she has accomplished. I'm very proud of the final result on the Black mural project on the street. But more than anything, I really appreciate her professionalism. And when she provided a speech on Friday, I got to talk to her and tell her that I really appreciate so much and how, more than anything, her passion. And it has been a joy to work with someone like her. I appreciate the fact that she came today and thanked us. I want to say that we thank her for her talent more than anything else. So, thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you.
The next person we have is Gina Carey. Gina, go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yay! Good evening and thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for this opportunity to voice my opinion. My name is Gina Carey and I'm a Renton resident. I am against the sale of puppy mill puppies in our city. I'm against people making a profit off the production of pets. Rather than working so hard to come up with the regulation for pet sales and then trying to hold them accountable, preferably at all times, regulating and dealing with any and all infractions and going through all this rigmarole for just one store here in Renton, let's just say no. HB 1424 stops any future stores, so let's process out this one store. Instead, let's pass a humane ordinance. I just don't know why we would want to spend so much time and effort to regulate one store, especially since it practices predatory loans, sells puppy mill puppies, which so many residents are against, and it is unpopular politically. Let's make it simple and easy. Let's follow the lead of other states and cities and enact a humane ordinance. Let's protect not only the puppies, but also eliminate the opportunity for our residents to be sucked into predatory loans and potentially sick puppies. Let's just do the right thing. Thank you so much for your time.
The next person we have is Carmen Rivera. Carmen, go ahead.
Good evening, Renton City Council. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for opening up public comment this evening. Thank you for hearing from all of us. I know that this can go pretty long. And I also wanted to additionally add to Trinise Williams' statement. I volunteered with the YLM mural and I'm just a little disappointed as someone who was born and raised in this city. I'm a first-generation Rentonite. My father came here from New York via Puerto Rico. And now that we are a BIPOC-based city, I have seen, as someone who's born and raised in, or just mural now, the social media campaign from the city that I saw on Facebook and YouTube did not paint the full picture of what community did. What the city did in those posts on Facebook and on YouTube was take credit for the work of community. I appreciate the Renton Municipal Art Commission for what they did, but it was not just them who completely supported this project. They were actually later in supporting this project. It was the community members of Renton, the black community members of Renton. I am not a black person, I'm a Latina. I am an ally. And I have not seen the city really support Black Lives Matter through and through. There was pushback when it came to this mural, more so than I really would like to know. And it's really, really disheartening to me as a community member. It was someone who is, with a black person, who was going to have a diverse family, growing up in the city, who's going to raise her own family in this city. I am disappointed, I'm just really disappointed, that the city of Renton did not give credit to the Renton Residents for Change and the Black Alliance for Inclusion and Equity, Dr. Linda Smith and those organizers like Trinise Williams, who put blood, sweat, and tears for over a year into this mural. And I'm just very, very disheartened that those posts did not even recognize those groups. Those posts did not even mention those groups. You are all very well familiar with the Renton Residents for Change. They have organized public comment here many and many times. So I know you all know that. So I understand that none of you manage social media. I get that this is not, you all get the brunt of it, I understand that. But you know who runs your social media and I would like a correction to be made. I would like that post to be remade or reposted, giving credit to the Renton Residents for Change and the Black Alliance for Inclusion and Equity and to also support Dr. Linda Smith and Trinise Williams and all of the work that they did for this mural. That is what I'm asking you to do, is to please give credit where credit is due. Because the way that that post was made, it looks performative. And again, I'm just going to say, it's disheartening. I know I've been on here and I have been angry with you. I am just sad. I am beyond angry. I am sad. I am disappointed. I am disheartened that there was pushback and the lack of support and now these posts that make it look like the city of Renton, they were here all along for this mural when we know that was not the case. Which is why we are asking for the Equity and Empowerment Commission not be just a mayor-appointed commission. We cannot just rely on one person to appoint people for Equity and Empowerment Commission and with all due respect, someone who is also not of the BIPOC community. We need BIPOC community members, black, indigenous, people of color, who are going to determine who serve on this Equity and Empowerment Commission, people from the Renton community. I understand that many of your committee commissions are mayor-appointed and I understand that process, but it is very exclusionary for those who may not be in the same circles or have the same relationship or same connection. And so again, I'm asking, humbly, humbly asking that the City Council, one, remake that post and repost and give credit to the Renton Residents for Change and the Black Alliance for Equity and Inclusion. And two, when you are forming Equity and Empowerment Commission, reach out to community. Ask them to be a part of the interview process for those who want to serve on that commission. Make sure that you reach out to most vulnerable and marginalized community members. That is what I'm asking you. I am very thankful for your time. I am thankful for your energy and for the efforts that you all make. I really hope you listen to what was said tonight and that you make the reparations that are necessary. Thank you all so very, very much.
The next person we have is Nancy Quinn. Nancy, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you all so much for what you do. I honestly don't know how you do it. With that said, my name is Nancy Quinn. I'm a Renton resident. I'm calling to see if I can get contact with the Planning Commission for the apartment complex that's going to be built at the old Stoneway property. I'm a little concerned about an aquifer that's under that property and what mitigation is going to be, how that's going to be managed, because that property is going to be built right on top of a huge aquifer for our city. So I'm just hoping you guys can steer me. And Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Just before the meeting, when I was Googling to try to find the Zoom information, realized that you sent me an email back in August trying to help us with a public safety issue and I will reach back out to all of you regarding that and try to schedule that. But I'm sorry, I didn't see it until tonight. So if you have any information that can lead me to the Planning Commission for that construction site, that would be much appreciated.
You bet. If you want to send me another email tomorrow, I will connect you with the folks you need to talk to.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There is one other hand raised.
If I may, just while I have the floor. We have received a lot of email about the humane pet ordinance and I know that it went to the Planning Commission for review. Mr. Mayor, I wonder if, you know, all of the community understands the process. It's a lengthy, kind of involved process. And I did want to let the community know that ordinances have to make their way through quite a few gates to come to fruition through our prescribed processes. And this one's partway through, so I don't want the community to feel like it's, like the council's holding it up or are not trying to move forward on it. And I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you could add any to that or if that's self-evident, what I just said, but...
No. Yes.
Before you take the floor, I want to take the opportunity to give a follow-up on this. First of all, I want to thank everybody that has sent us an email. We are listening. We heard their concerns. Most of you know who of us own dogs and everybody knows that I am a dog person 1 for 20%. We have been having certain conversations in the Planning Committee about this issue. Obviously, as Councilmember Cornman has pointed out, this issue is still in the Renton Applying Commission and we are waiting for deliberation and recommendation to us. But I personally have very strong, give my opinion on my feelings on how disappointed I am from the state legislature for not taking all the steps necessary to forbid the sales of dogs and cats everywhere, including in stores that are already open in different cities. As they mentioned, I am not saying that they closed the store. They can sell everything on the stores, but not dogs and cats. So I have very strong feelings about this. So as President Cornet said, we are following procedure. We are waiting for this to finish and come to the recommendation from the Renton Commission to the Renton Committee. But I want the public to know that we are listening to them and we know what's their desire. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did see Dr. Linda Smith trying to raise her hand. Would council allow her to speak?
I think it's still audience comment.
She raised her hand and then she brought it back down again.
A couple of times, so. I just thought, since we're still in this portion of the meeting.
Yeah. Is she here still?
Did she leave? Okay.
Hold on one second. Let me try and find out.
Okay.
Dr. Smith, did you want to address council?
I don't see her here. Yeah, I think she must have left the meeting, so.
Well, I actually have an announcement to make that's kind of about this subject and so hopefully it'll...
Jason, guys, I see Dr. Smith was on the phone there.
Oh, okay.
I just want to give her a hug, charity.
Keep jumping.
There she is, right there.
There she is, okay.
Can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you now, yes.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know what was happening. I was there. Thank you. But greetings to the mayor, to council president and city council members. I'm Linda Smith, Renton resident. And I wanted to talk tonight about the Black Lives Matter mural at the Stanford Justice. So the dedication event of September 3rd for the Black Lives Mural was beautiful, joyful, and full of life with people of all backgrounds coming together to paint, to celebrate, and create a sense of unity within the community. And we're grateful to Justice and others from the Art Commission for their passionate work over the past year. However, there were several disappointing moments, as we've previously heard, when the city wrote an article and failed to mention the black leadership that has been guiding this and other projects within the city of Renton. No one would have stepped up and said, "Let's put down a mural." As a matter of fact, these past 12 months, the meeting and the voices of the black community to stand focus has been the key to engaging more blacks in the city of Renton. We as black leaders and allies recognize and understand that the pathway to victory is through opposition and that has been our story. But my point is this, it was not about a black lives mural, but black lives leadership coming together with the community. The city named the Art Commission and could have easily reached out to one of the black leaders who has been a part of this to share thoughts. This was a total disrespect to black leadership and an affront to our dignity, respect, and humanity. When we talk about seeing through the lens of equity, it means that we engage the voice of the various communities that we talk to. This was the golden moment, to embrace your statement of equity and inclusion that you've written in your policy. You see, words means nothing when it comes to equity if it does not align with your action. To absent our voices, to absent us as human beings, an age-old narrative that we've had to live with. You say you want equity and inclusion for blacks and other groups, but your action and recent appointment has not held true to your commitment of inclusion and equity in the realignment of position, promotion, and hiring of assignments and key position in the city of Renton. The placement of whites and a few other people of color, of races, continue to have priority when it comes to assignments within the city government. The city of Renton has to step up and do what is right. The city of Renton has to do more than a video of a Tobin Black in King 5 Evening of a Tobin Black in Team Five evening report and a structured racism statement. Your hiring, your internal promotion, your equability and distribution of funds must include Blacks. Equity for Blacks is, is for the long-term residents like John Houston, partially blind, can have his business and not feel like he's a suspect because he's a Black man. Say our name, Black Lives Matter. We're business owners, we're social service agent, we're police officer, we're faith leaders, we're government officials, we're educators, we're consulting, and we are resident. We must have somebody at the table that says, where are Blacks included in this? Where is their voice? You can't be so afraid that if you say our names, it will give you an end. No, it will just make the plan feel even. When you are afraid to say our name, you erase our identity and you cover up your past and equity so that you don't need to face them. You can say Blacks when it's negative, but when it's positive, you erase our name. Yes, the event was wonderful, but your actions demonstrate that Black Lives do not matter. The mural is a visible sign that Black Lives matter. But a mirror without action is meaningless. Black Lives will matter when the Forest for Justice Initiative and other actions are taken serious. So I just know, why, why do Blacks have to fight for the things that supported us by the Constitution of the United States of America? I'm tired of fighting. If you're serious about issues of equity inclusion, you must begin to shorten your action. Your words are no, no longer good. Yes, I was disappointed because we have worked hard to make this a city where Blacks can all feel that they're included. Do we want this moment to go down in history? As one where, which identify, the identity of Black leadership and community was stolen? Or do we want it to go down as a moment in history to say, we didn't get the right thing? It not only taught the words of inclusion, but they lived them out in their action, ensuring equality for everyone, Blacks included? Ring, you can do better by Blacks. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone that hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, does it look like Alibaba?
Okay.
Ally, go ahead.
Oh my gosh, it's Ally Cohen, sorry, my Zoom name. My fault. Ally Cohen, I'm a Renton of resident, Renton resident. I work in Renton. And I just wanted to echo and support the public comments made about the Black Lives Matter mural. I know a lot of work went into it. And I certainly wasn't involved from the very beginning, but being involved just in the past few months, I saw the incredible work that went into it, particularly by Tree, who already spoke, and Dr. Linda Smith. And I just hope that y'all hear the public comment with an open heart and open mind and realize that our country, society, city has such a long history of anti-Blackness and it never was going to be a one-and-done. We have so much work to do. I, I hope we've all done a good job in expressing our gratitude for the opportunities that have been given and the conversations that have started. But I just want to, you know, add on to, to keep framing this as a continual conversation. And, you know, there, there was a lot of really great recommendations and suggestions by the organizers. And I also just wanted to give a shout out to all the public comments about the puppy mill. I haven't been able to contribute to that in the way that I would like to, but, but I also am really grateful for all the efforts for that humane puppy ordinance. And I'm really grateful just at like the intersections of democracy that we have going on right now in Renton, where we have these multiple initiatives. And I hope that they get equal consideration and momentum and enthusiasm, regardless of agenda items. And shout out Tree for all the work he did and Dr. Linda Smith. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else.
No other hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Jason, please.
So I'd like to make an amount, an announcement for the benefit of the public regarding a change in the administrative process for accepting audience comment. Beginning at the next council meeting, September 20th, 2021, residents and others who wish to speak during the audience comment period will be required to register in advance. A link to the registration form will be included on future agendas, as well as being posted to the City Council webpage, the Council Agenda Portal webpage, and various city social media sites. The form requires the following information from speakers: the meeting date, the meeting you would like to speak at, full name of the speaker, the city of residence, the email address and/or phone number, and the topic of the speaker's comments. Registration will be open at all times. The speakers must register by 5:00 PM on the day of the, of a council meeting in order to be called upon at that council meeting. Anyone who registers after the 5:00 PM deadline on the day of the council meeting will not be called upon to speak and will be required to re-register for the next council meeting if they wish to speak at that next meeting. We're making these changes for three reasons. The first is to ensure that everyone who desires to speak during the audience comment portion of the meeting is recognized and afforded the opportunity. I believe there's been times in the past where we missed, where speakers have tried to raise their hand. So this is hopefully going to eliminate that. And then two, to allow staff an ability to collect speakers' email addresses or phone numbers so we can provide a more immediate response to residents' concerns. And then third and final is to help us administratively establish a more formal process for records management purposes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. We have 16 items for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
At this, at this time, I'd like to ask if any council member would like any of these 16 items removed for individual discussion or consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I would like to pull item K for separate and individual consideration.
Okay.
Okay, any others? All right, hearing no others, Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of the consent agenda as published minus item K. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, second by Councilmember McGurran, that the consent agenda be adopted as published minus item K. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries, Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item K relates only to a title change for the signature authority on the local government investment pool. As such, it has no financial impact to consider. And therefore, I move that council concur with item K independently and that the related ordinance be read as part of tonight's legislate, legislation.
Aye, second.
Okay, then moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Council President Corman, that item K be removed and concurred with separately and moved to tonight for movement on the resolution. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion, motion carries. Okay, unfinished business, Council President Corman.
Thank you, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ben and Diddy.
I have no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee has four committee reports.
Okay, the first report is regarding claims and payroll vouchers. Approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Counts payable, total payment of $9,307,082.05 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers in two wire transfers. Payroll, a total payment of $1,577,679.56 for payroll vouchers that include 651 direct deposits and 20 checks. This is the August 1st through 15th pay period. And then Kidder Matthew vouchers totaling $26,735.72.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a grant for the Family First Community Center. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to accept the Washington State Department of Commerce Grant, 2019 Local and Community Project Grant in the amount of $1,455,000 to reimburse construction costs of the Family First Community Center. The Committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the grant.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran.
This is an absolutely awesome grant that in combination with a couple of other grants are actually going to get us over the finish line to start building the Family First Community Center. And it's just an awesome, awesome honor for me to say that I move that council concur with this Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilwoman Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. And yes, this is some of the last funds that we're going to need to be able to start construction. Everyone, please.
Okay, the next report is regarding hiring a building inspector electrical at Step D of Grade A 21. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize staff to compensate Robert Thompson as a building inspector electrical at Step D of Grade A 21, effective today, September 16th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilwoman Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, then the final Finance Committee Report is regarding an inter-local agreement with the Renton Regional Fire Authority. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into Amendment Number One to inter-local agreement for cooperation between the city of Renton and the Renton Regional Fire Authority.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee's Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilwoman Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember McGurran?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Councilwoman Prince?
Yes, the Planning and Development Committee has a committee report.
Okay, this report is regarding Title IV, Docket 16, Group B. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the 2021 Title IV, Docket Group Number 16, Group B. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the items listed below be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. Docket 194 Retail Pet Sales has been placed on hold to allow for additional review time. Item 1, Docket 191, ADUs with religious institutions. Docket 196, Height and setbacks in RMF zone. Docket 199, Residential accessory structures. Furthermore, the Planning and Development Committee concurs with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt amendments to Renton Municipal Code for Docket 200, compliance with E2SHB 1220 and Docket 201 UC Zone Development Standards. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for these items be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Prince?
I move that council concur with the Fighting, the Planning and Development Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved by Councilwoman Prince, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Onto legislation, we have two resolutions, one ordinance for first reading and two ordinance for second and final.
Okay, the first ord, or, excuse me, the first resolution is regarding the inter-local agreement with the RFA. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into Amendment Number One to inter-local agreement for cooperation between the city of Renton and Renton Regional Fire Authority.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilwoman Prince, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next resolution is regarding the title change for the local government investment pool. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, changing the title of the authorized individual delegated to administer the investment of city of Renton monies in the local government investment pool from the Administrative Services Administrator to the Finance Administrator.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilwoman Prince, that the council adopt the resolution as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, next is ordinance number 6026 for first reading, Docket 200, which is compliance with ES2HB 1220. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting final zoning regulations previously adopted as interim zoning controls by ordinance number 5996 and ordinance number 6019, which changes to expand the number of zones in which homeless services may locate and otherwise align with requirements of ESS, excuse me, ESS HB 1220, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Prince?
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilwoman Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call for discussion.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. I was going to ask how the zones were selected that were recommended for inclusion?
So do we have staff here that can answer that question? No, we do.
We have Vanessa Upchurch.
Yes. Oh, you're muted. There you go.
Can you hear me, councilmembers?
Yes.
All right, thank you for the question, Councilmember Ben and Diddy. The zoning selection, the House bill that was passed gave the city two options, an option A, which required, oh, I'm assuming you're talking about the zoning selection for the emergency services housing option within this ordinance? There's a number of housing options within this ordinance. So given that, there was two options, an option A and an option B that was provided to the city via the state legislation. The option A required the allowance of all, the allowance of this use in all zones that had hotels. Option B provided for a variety of zones, provided it was the majority of the zones within the city and those zones were within a half mile of a transit site. We did an analysis of the transit access and every single zone within the city fell within that. So basically, that led us to a majority of the zones within the city. So option B provides a variety of options for housing. For these folks, that's not just focused on commercial. It gives you a variety of residential sites as well as commercial sites, allowing for integration into neighborhoods and communities. So that was the general thought process behind it.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
Was there any discussion of inclusion in the CA zone?
There was a lot of discussion at Planning Commission in regards to both options, option A and option B. And we did talk about option A, which would have included the CA zone. And we, the planning. And we, the Planning Commission recommended option B.
Hey, thank you, Vanessa.
Okay, any other questions at this time? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to, let's see here, to move this ordinance to second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the final two ordinances are for second and final reading. The first is regarding Docket Number 184, which is zoning map adoption. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 42030 of the Rent Municipal Code, updating zoning map procedures and practices, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Prince, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, whoa, 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 stop. Sorry, 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 yeah, this is second and final reading. Requires a roll call. We haven't done this in a while.
Council President Corman.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
Councilmember Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurvin.
Aye.
And Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the final ordinance is also for second and final reading, and it's Docket Number 187, Appeal Notice. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4880G, 4890F, 48110C8, and 48110F4 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending public notice requirements for appeals and clarifying the distinction between open record hearings and open record appeals, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Prince, second by Councilwoman Perez, that the ordinance be adopted and read. This requires a roll call.
Council President Corman.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
Councilmember Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurvin.
Aye.
And Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And we are on to new business. Council President Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. A couple of meetings to announce, both of them for a week from today, September 20th, 2021. The first meeting is at 6:00 p.m., committed the whole via video conference. And we just have one item on that agenda. It's the American Rescue Plan Act update. And then I'd also like to announce that an hour later, at 7:00 p.m., we'll have our regular council meeting also via video conference. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, September 2021, no, 2021, we will have our Public Safety Committee via video conference at 3:45 p.m. We have three items on the agenda: Spoil Light Department's Promotion, RFA Briefing, and Emerging Issues in Public Safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Benedetti.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At 3:00 p.m. on September 20th, we will be having a Utilities Committee meeting via video conference. The first item on the agenda is Amendment Number One to CAG 21011 with Murray Smith, Inc. for the Downtown Utility Improvement Project. And the second item on the agenda is emerging issues in utilities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Halloran.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurvin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, September 20th, at 4:45 p.m. via video conference. There's four items on the agenda. First is Amendment Number 121 to LAG 191 with Rainier Flight Services LLC. Second is compensation and final approval of Solero Street Vacation Petition, VAC 22, 20-002. And third, temporary full street closure of Sunset Lane Northeast between 10th, Northeast 10th Street and Harrington Place Northeast. And finally, emerging issues in transportation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And finally, Councilwoman Prince.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. What is the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Prince, second by Council President Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone who wants to stay around a little longer, say no. Okay, motion carries. Good night, thank you all.
Good night.